Third time's the charm.
You have to be firm.
Good evening, and welcome to the September fourteenth work session of the Ann Arbor City Council. Roll call, the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember, pedisopathy?
Here.
Councilmember, rear?
Here.
Councilmember, west?
Yeah.
Councilmember, long?
Here.
Councilmember, grand?
Here.
Councilmember, councilman?
Here.
Councilmember, cradle?
Here.
Councilmember, even?
Here.
Councilmember, orowski?
Here.
Councilmember, Raymond?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here. Excellent. Well, tonight, we of course have before us a work session on the pedestrian safety and access task force recommendations to city council, and we're delighted to receive it and have the conversation. So, Mr. Hupi, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Connie Pulsifer is with us tonight. She was staff supporting the task force as they went through their deliberations, and I'll turn the floor over to her and the task force.
Thank you, Craig. I'm Connie Pulsifer with the Systems Planning Unit. Good to see everyone this evening. This is exciting evening for the task force. A little bit of background and history. November of 2013, city council passed a resolution which established a pedestrian safety task force. This is a nine-member appointed citizen group that was charged with exploring strategies for improving pedestrian safety and access citywide and to make recommendations that would ultimately be considered as part of the development of a pedestrian safety action plan. The task force met monthly from April 2014 through August 2015, so just last month. They met every month, both in full task force and as subcommittees to identify issues, explore potential strategies, and ultimately make recommendations. Staff in the Greenway Collaborative supported, provided support for the task force for the seventeen-month effort. As they engaged in three rounds of stakeholder and community-wide meetings, they processed over thirteen hundred online comments that led ultimately to the formation of their recommendation. Tonight, the task force will deliver their final plan to the mayor and council, and we're all thrilled to be here. You've all received your own hard copy of the report, I believe, and the task force tonight would first like to make a twenty-minute presentation as summary of their recommendations before opening the floor for further discussion. So, that will be the first item on the agenda tonight. They're grateful for this opportunity to meet with you, and many of the members were able to attend this evening, and I'd like to introduce them, and then the show's all theirs. They're looking forward to having conversations with you about their report. So first is Linda Diane Felt. She's the chair. I'm looking around here because I didn't take full inventory. Scott Campbell, Owen Jansen on the end, Anthony Pennell, Sarah, I saw you come in, Sarah Presper-Grenwitz, and Jim. I saw Jim come in as well, if I missed anybody. All right, great. The floor is all yours, Linda Diane.
So we do have a PowerPoint that we're going to use, but we'll move fairly quickly through it. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. We're really happy to have this section complete, and we're also glad to have done the work that you requested for the last year and a half. As requested, we've broken it down into two sections so that we wanted to do the snow and ice issue separately from the first batch of recommendations, and so we'll be skipping the snow and ice until the next, the second hour. Is there a light on the podium that I can see?
No.
My nose? Okay, then.
I have a flashlight.
I have a cellphone, actually, so I can, it doesn't work real well. So, we've already done the introductions, so that puts me ahead of time already. We wanted to emphasize the fact that we did have a great deal of community engagement, and the public participants have even complimented us on our public engagement and transparent process. Everything was online and available and interactive the whole time. We did everything that we could think of to solicit public involvement and to keep stakeholders involved and up to date, and also, we spent a lot of time analyzing that public input and actually using it as well. So we've based our recommendations on what we heard. Thank you. The community engagement was quite extensive, and and we did set priorities. There are many ways that we could have set priorities, but what we actually did was use the open city hall as well as a community meeting to hear the priorities that the public had, and we combined that with what the task force felt was most important, and there was a great deal of agreement, which was really quite reinforcing for us. The, so the task force members are going to present the individual sections, and I'm going to just give a little bit of overview first, and then they'll go in order, so you get to hear a little bit from each individual. And I can't read the captions on our wonderful cartoons by now, but I think it says, go ahead, I was a little bit, go ahead, I was a little bit distracted for a moment. So we have a lot of cartoons in our presentation for you tonight. So we did start with the five underlying issues that we wanted to address, and that had to do with the walking environment in town. So this is in the report, as you can see on page six, so you've probably already gone over it. But definitely a disconnect between the experiences of those people in cars, those people walking, and the issue, of course, of distracted roadway users. So these were incorporated into the recommendations as we went along. We also identified seven behaviors. The public went through a process in order to help us with that as well, and this caption says, "In this city, Jack, you learn to respect the pedestrians," and that's a woman doing a great dropkick to a truck. So these were the behaviors that people were most concerned about, having to do with the crosswalk issues, motorists passing other vehicles that are stopped for pedestrians, motorists failing to stop for pedestrians, motorists failing to stop for pedestrians, especially at school crosswalks, was pulled out of that. Motorists failing to yield to pedestrians while turning, and the problem with signing, marking, signaling of crosswalks, snow and ice accumulation, and motorists speeding in residential neighborhoods. And the bottom thing that you can't see, there's a reference to the page of the report. We did end up with a goal, which was essentially to have zero traffic fatalities, and that is a beginning point. It's certainly not an endpoint, and there's a lot of complexity in that as well. We also don't want people to get hurt, but we started off with fatalities. And we want to improve pedestrian use, make it a better experience, improve on the physical conditions of the roadway, address the needs of all the users, which would include pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and I suppose a few others, and also deal with the distracted driving issue. For the goal of vision, for the vision zero goal, I think that it's best to refer you to the report. There are resources that are listed in the back, which will really help to expand your understanding of that. I know it's already been a conversation around city council, so I'm not going to belabor that point at all, but it's here in the presentation, the basics for those who are not used to it yet. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Jim. Who's going to go over objective one? And I'll help time you.
Yeah, they need a, they do need a light here. Okay, so my name's Jim Reese. Some of you know me. And I'm told I have about three minutes, so I'm not going to cover all of these items up here. But on the, on the first one, best practices for complete street planning and design, there's a set of engineering standards called ASHTO, to which our streets are designed, and ASHTO is concerned primarily, almost exclusively, with designing streets for motor vehicles. And there are other engineering standards, NACTO being the main one, that talk about designing streets for not, other users of the road. And so where ASHTO only has things like turning radii, and, you know, where you put the stripe down the center and so on, these other standards will say things like where you have to put crosswalks. And so it's important to include these other standards in your design process. On the issue of, how do I? Okay, well, I'll just leave it here and read from my notes, if that's okay. On the issue of connectivity, of course, a lot of housing developments in this country, you just have kind of a walled-off area with one entrance and no way to get through it. We do a lot better than that here, and I was very pleased to see the Planning Commission, when they were, when they were looking at that new hotel across from Weber's, they insisted on sidewalks and a way to get across the street to Weber's and over to the next hotel without having to walk back out to Jackson. And I thought that was great, and I'd like to see you do way more of that. That's something we do well, and we could do better, and we should do better. Construction zones, this is, I spent some time looking into construction zones. When I was a kid, if there was a construction zone, there'd always be like a little shed you could walk through, and you could look through knot holes in the wood and watch the construction, which was great, and we don't do that anymore. And the, it's strictly finance, it's a financial incentive sort of thing. It costs so much per square foot to close a sidewalk, and so much to close a street, so much to build a shed, and so on. And the incentives have inverted because none of these prices have been updated in thirty years. And so now it's cheaper for a developer to simply close the sidewalk and pay the, pay the associated fines than it is to keep the sidewalk open or build one of those sheds. And so that's a simple problem that we could fix easily, just tell the staff to, you know, come up with new, new fees for these things, that would invert the incentive back to the way it should be. And finally, I would urge you to stop removing crosswalks, like you did at Huron and Ravenna, for example. I know a lot of people deny that we're removing crosswalks, but we are, and we should stop doing that, or at least if you remove them, like at Seventh and Jefferson, one was removed there, but another one was put in just north of there. So it's, you know, you can remove it if you replace it, but, but don't just take them out and then leave them out. And that's all I have.
Eleven minutes, seconds over. We're missing Ken Clark, who is going to be doing this next section, so I guess I will step in. Objective number two starts off with, the blue diamonds, by the way, for the audience, are the ones that we did identify as the top priorities. So objective number two starts off with the preserve the pedestrian crosswalk law. And I believe that that was a unanimous decision, and it was also something that we came by quite naturally, and we are hoping that we can have further conversation with you about why we came to that decision. I think it could be a longer discussion, certainly. But this section is about improving the understanding of traffic laws and also the local expectations. One of the things that was startling to me was to learn that we have about seventy thousand visitors per day in Ann Arbor, and some of those people come in regularly, but some of them are here for the first time with medical needs and that kind of thing. And so the improving local expectations is certainly important as well as the larger training that we have to essentially do every single day. And that's why communication about understanding, the education, outreach efforts, those kinds of things are pretty critical. And so we have a whole list of ideas about education, motors education, pedestrian education, and even some of the tone of that, which I, I think the nuance of that could be quite helpful in the future. And this is also a lot about enforcement, stricter enforcement for high-risk areas in particular, and we've denoted which ones we think are most important. And in the we want gateway treatments to be included that would let people know what the law is and what the expectation is in Ann Arbor, and essentially to elevate us as a pedestrian-friendly city. I think that that's the gist of this objective. It's, it obviously has quite a few recommendations, quite a lot of detail. In the appendix, we also did generate partly in conjunction with the stakeholders at the U of M, what some of these educational processes could be. And so that's background material that's also provided. So with that, yes, please.
Owen Jansen, just to add one or two comments on this. I think in the course of all of our public outreach program and participation, if there was one predominant recurring theme, it was, we need more enforcement. And I think we all realize that we cannot completely engineer our way to a vision zero goal, that there has to be some major changes in behavior, both on the part of motors and pedestrians. And I just happened to witness yesterday a pedestrian crossing at that junction between Stadium and Washington Hall, going right across traffic, easily could have been killed, and it would have been entirely the pedestrian's fault. Obviously, there's some reengineering that could be done there, but pedestrian education, I think, is equally important here, and we need to work on that as well.
And Scott?
There we go. Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Scott Campbell and Ward Two. Not to play favorites. This is somehow chopped off, but, no, it's pretty good. So this objective is focusing actually more on design, and, and this was a discussion as an aside that we had, which was, how much is this a question of enforcement, education, good design? Full disclosure, I'm an urban planner, so I will push design here. By the way, there are many points in this objective, but A through D and then, I think it's G, are the ones that are flagged the highest. This one is the fact that we have a lot of different crosswalks, and they, lots of different signage and design treatments, and our goal is actually, can we have a more consistent one so that pedestrians and the drivers know what to expect? That said, we also know that each situation needs perhaps a different treatment. Here are four ones that people probably know well, and I would say one of the worst would be fuller connecting Gallup Park to Huron High School. If you are a parent of a high schooler, this is a scary intersection. Of course, sightlines is very important. This one, not as much traffic this week because of construction, but Geddes at Gallup, just taking extra precautions at places where sightlines are not good. Point C, good lighting, of course, at night. I would love to show an example from the US, but I think the Canadians and the Europeans do it even better. This is a nice one from British Columbia. We've seen more of these, the RRFB, the flashing beacons, this one is one of them on Plymouth Road. There's a debate of how effective these are, but that's a longer story. One of the biggest issues that we've seen is the dangers of multi-lane or roads where there's two or more lanes of traffic in each direction, and, and often when someone is stopped immediately before the crosswalk, it's not effective enough. So one thing recommended, even by your non-motorized plan, is to have advanced stop bars, which give a good distance between the stopped car and the crosswalk. F, pedestrian crossing islands, and you probably recognize the new one on Seventh Street near Washington Street. These both send nice visual cues to the driver that something is coming up, and literally provides a safe space for the pedestrian. They only have to look one way each way. Those tend to be embraced all across the country as effective. G, reduce conflicts. We could tell stories about New York City here, one of the few places that bans right turns on red. And this is a study that is highly cited from the Journal of Safety Research, and I'll just read it. The majority of these right turn on red, R-T-O-R, crashes involve the driver looking left for a gap in traffic and striking a pedestrian or bicyclist coming from the driver's right. For some, a white or a green walk sign should be a kind of contract, but we know that you get that, and people are still driving. This is another big issue. We're about halfway there. Can there be different signalization approaches? The diagram in the bottom right is a traffic engineer's dream, and for everyone else is obtuse or macrame, but it just shows all the potential conflicts. One thing here that seen is called a pedestrian scramble. This one is in Toronto, but you see many different places, including New York. It is red all way for drivers and green all way for pedestrians. Obviously, only a few intersections would work well, but it's something to consider. This is a question for AATA, and they're already working on this, and we encourage them to continue figuring out where to put bus stops relative to crosswalks. This is one by my building between Art and Architecture and its time, and the VA. A few others. A lot of the walkways are eight feet. ASHTO says twelve to fourteen. One speculative idea is would people more respond to a flashing red than a flashing yellow, but regulations will tell you RFBs have to be yellow. And two final ones, and you probably recognize David Zinn's work. This is more for the winter. If there are ways to redo sidewalk drainage so that they don't do it, and I think the current sidewalk repair program doesn't involve this, but that's an open question. And finally, ramp drainage so that you don't have to wear rubber boots all winter long. Thank you.
And now we get to hear from Sarah.
Hi, Sarah Presper-Grenwitz, Ward Five. That's Peter, who's, last time I was here was in here. He's growing up. I would like to talk about objective four, which is addressing the safety and access for all users. And to clarify, this means we have a fairly good pedestrian network. There are several times a year where it's not very accessible, especially for those who are mobility-challenged, who are young, and especially those who are very old and are in danger of falls. So the overarching goal is to make the transportation system accessible for all as much as we can. There's always going to be a snowfall that it will take some time to clear, but we, as a community, need to prioritize making sure that people can access that sidewalk, they can cross the street. There's a number of times, the way that plowing works, there's ice buildup kind of by the crosswalks that can make a normally well-cleared sidewalk unusable for somebody. We'd also like to, we're allies of the bicycling community, but there are times where bicyclists, when they compete with pedestrians or make it unsafe for pedestrians, would like pedestrian, or the bicyclists to use the facilities on the road as opposed to the sidewalk, especially in the downtown. There are some cases where rumble strips or indication strips for those who are blind could be really helpful near roundabouts and near crosswalks so that people can enter those, those facilities safely. This is where it's important to have a well-enforced ordinance as well, that once they make it into that, into that crosswalk, into that roundabout, that they are safe. And as I talked about earlier, this kind of year-round accessibility of the sidewalk, I hope that we can have a community that people can expect to be able to leave their homes safely and to use the wonderful pedestrian network that we have. So with that, there are things like snow and, or I'm sorry, salt and sand that is already available from the city, but to make sure that that's more widely known. And then if somebody has trouble clearing their sidewalks, et cetera, that there are financial or other assistances that could, that can be offered so that it's not a overwhelming burden for somebody so that we can maintain the pedestrian network.
Thanks. And now we have Tony.
Right, so the, this, the final objective, objective number five, let's see, we want to push to where, this one, there we are, is a topic that we all hear about almost every day, sadly, you know, reducing distractions, minimizing consequences. And in looking at this topic, we'll come into a few things that, actually, in speaking with some of you just before the meeting, it makes me think that when some of you were in Germany, and you visited the Germans, who's actually sang that nice song for you here in city council, that's the last time I was here, and you're visiting people there in Tübingen, and they are in the area of Stuttgart there, in the Black Forest, and these people, they're in that area, they're very dependent on the auto industry. A lot of their universities are fantastic, too, but they see this whole issue that we're looking at of car drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, they see this very holistically, all of them, all of them do. They are passionate automotive engineering people. As we all know that about German engineers, they're passionate about bicycling. The best riders in Germany come from the Black Forest, and they are most passionate, all of them, the same, very same people, about walking, about trekking, hiking. It is even more than soccer. It is the national sport of Germany. So when you have your Sunday lunch, afterwards, you always go out walking for a couple of miles, afterwards you have a beer. This is this sort of attitude we've really tried to adopt in looking at, at these ideas about reducing distractions and minimizing consequences, is taking this holistic attitude that this is not about antique motorists. is not about antique motorists in any way. Anyway, the first one of these is that an idea that is detailed in the report about having a champion, championing this whole issue and the idea of champion distracted driving, walking, and a walking campaign that would basically draw attention to this. It seems like a very obvious thing because all of us, when you go through campus, when you go anywhere, you say, oh my gosh, look at those pedestrians, you know, just wandering across the street with the -- with the whatever device on their faces. And then pedestrians will say the same thing about car drivers. And just a targeted campaign with whatever means we have to just draw attention to this for all sides, for all sides. Something, the next topic is something that actually came up before city council a good number of years ago, but was put aside because of a statewide ban, that legislation on texting. But the whole idea about a local ordinance banning the use of handheld or even hands-free devices is becoming more and more of a national subject. More and more states have statewide bans on handheld devices. More and more states, there are more cities introducing individual things. It is mostly becoming a topic, of course, because using devices is quickly almost overtaking alcohol and causing, you know, the high number of accidents. So it is a serious thing that we can't just say it's been done. The remaining, the next three here, topics have to do with speed. Speed of automobiles and on the roads that they're on. And this will have to do, it's detailed there in the report. Also, one final area that we would really like to look at is, that we have looked at in the report, is that locally lobbying for greater control over our roads. Speeds on our roads that are maybe controlled by the state. We feel it's really something that we can push as an our -- or a powerful community to have control over these speeds. Thank you.
And we have just two more slides before we get into the conversation. And the first is that obviously we had a fairly limited time and resources and there's lots of data collection that we are suggesting and that's outlined in the report as well. The implementation strategies, you heard about the pedestrian champion, also including having a standing committee ongoing. And I love this comic, if pedestrians had clout. And you can see that the sidewalks are cleared and the streets not so much. And there's also, of course, a planning component and that should also be much more detailed than what I can cover in just a few seconds. And so I'll refer you back to the report for that as well. The funding. This is a crosswalk button that is fueled by depositing coins, is the comic there. And we do recognize that funding is the major impediment and that we have a couple of ideas to get started, actually. And so those are in the report as well, but it was way too overwhelming a topic for us to delve into in as much detail as we really wanted to. So with that.
It's the button on the back.
Questions and discussion. I'll be happy to bring up task force members. Ken snuck in. Come on over.
Yeah.
Ken Clark was also a member of the task force.
Well, thank you very much collectively for that presentation and of course too for the report, which is outstanding. Are there questions from the floor? Councilmember Warplewski.
First of all, to echo the mayor's comments, thank you so much. Great work. There's a lot of really good stuff in here. I also want to point out, some, as I read the report, some of this was like, oh yeah, that's some great stuff that we could do. Also, just to give the staff the credit for the work they're doing, some of that as I read, it's like, oh wow, a lot of this is already in process. So the staff doesn't always issue a press release or make a big lot of noise about it, but I think there's definitely areas we can improve here, but also I want to give credit to our staff for the work that they've done on this.
We give them a lot of thanks, definitely.
To the point on, you mentioned the rumble strips on pavement, the rumble strips piece. For that, were you looking at the rumble strips on pavement for motorists or the tactile sidewalk indicators for?
Just an example on Nixon and Green Road.
In the pavement.
Okay. That's something where I could see in some places that might work really well. We've got a middle block crossing on Seventh where I think in a tight residential area that might not be. You mentioned the standing committee for, to work on this. How do you see that as different than the existing alternative transportation committee?
Who wants to answer? Ken?
All right, I'll go a little bit in history. There was a bicycle coordinating committee until the 90s. At one point, council decided it would be more effective to have a staff committee to deal with these problems. That's the all-transportation committee. This would be something that's a joint staff and the public, member citizens who would be appointed by council, who would be part of that committee. It was actually a recommendation of the bicycle coordinating committee before it was dissolved that a non-motorized committee of some type be formed or a transportation committee like that.
Last question for the task force at this point. You mentioned keeping the existing pedestrian safety crosswalk ordinance. We have waiting to deliberate a proposed minor amendment to clarify that the motorists should stop if they can do so safely. Did the task force deliberate this issue?
No, so not directly. The most recent proposal, correct me if I'm wrong, the most recent proposal for the modification because it basically came right at the end of our, the existence of the task force, we hadn't, we did not discuss this. We were looking at the wording of the ordinance as it stands right now.
Okay.
I can, well.
Yeah. I'll add something to that. People can correct me if I'm wrong, but although the task force was created around the time that there was a lot of debate in this chambers about it, as far as I interpret it, we were not explicitly tasked with evaluating the pedestrians' crossing law, nor were we, if we were, it would have been a rather, required to setting up a rather rigorous evaluation process before and after data. So it got evaluated as part of a larger process. I would say, at least my own opinion, was that most of the pressing pedestrian safety and access issues were not related to the Ann Arbor crosswalk ordinance, that most of the safety concerns we had were independent of which way the city went on that. So I think it's an important issue, but it was not primary.
Okay. It's coming back to us, so I wanted to hear what wisdom you had on that.
I just wanted to add briefly that Michigan is one of only two states that does not have a crosswalk law. And so our adopting a crosswalk law kind of brings us into parity with the rest of the country. Most states have adopted some version of the Uniform Traffic Code crosswalk law, which is a little different from ours. But that, the UTC version does not include the if they can do so safely wording.
Then my last question is one for staff. In the recommendations, there are recommendations five, C, D, and E that deal with speed in residential areas that seem to overlap with the resolution that council members Eaton and Anglin have been bringing forth. And we've been sort of wrestling with how to provide clarity and direction and for staff. Do you find this, the language that's in the report, to help move that forward, or are we still struggling to find the clarity you need to find on that?
I think the need for specificity still exists. C and D provide some guidance, although the guidance is at a very similar level to the resolution that council is considering.
You just provided the same answer. I was coming up the same.
Hi, it's Member Lambreer, Calliopathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the task force you clearly spent and the staff. A lot of, you dedicated a lot of hard work and time to this effort and so thank you to your team for delivering this great report and lots for us to delve into, obviously, and help advance. The, one thing that was brought, well, as part of this report, there are quite a few recommendations. There's 55 and 25 are priority recommendations. And then there's some additional recommendations beyond those to develop a pedestrian safety access plan, to identify pedestrian safety champion with the budget and staff, and then to establish an ongoing city committee. And I understand it's our job, not yours, to balance these various needs with others, but within your priority recommendations, I'm wondering if there are priorities within, among the priorities that you believe to be the most, offer the most leverage and have the best sort of cost-benefit equation?
I think the individual task force members probably have their own. I know I do. But early on, we identified snow and ice as one of those top priorities, which we'll be talking about at eight o'clock. I don't think it's really fair to prioritize otherwise unless somebody has a, we didn't really do that.
Possibly just in general, the dislike with a family or an individual, you'll see, you'll immediately recognize ones and you'll say, wow, we could do this quite quickly and very cheaply. Just, and it might not be the one that is number two on the list. It might be number eight on the list, but it's something that, oh yes, we could do that. It's a priority. So it could be just a little bit of common sense of, right, okay, that's, we can do this one now. Obviously, there were the ones that are more long-term.
Okay. We also spend a great deal of time talking with the, about the American with Disabilities Act and that whole concern might actually rise up to the top as well, that there is equal access for all users.
Okay. Thank you. Since Councilmember Warplewski touched on this, the pedestrian crosswalk ordinance and Mr. Campbell, Professor Campbell, I appreciate that you, you know, also indicated that you weren't tasked with evaluating this and that that's an important issue, but not, you know, the critical issue. But as Councilmember Warplewski also said, it's coming back here. I'm just wondering if anyone knows what's happening legislatively in Lansing on the pedestrian crosswalk legislation and what the impact would be on our local ordinance?
We had a presentation fairly early on from.
Representative Zemke?
Yes.
Yeah.
And as far as we know, it has not moved forward very far at all.
Hasn't come out of committee.
Has not come out of committee. Councilmember Brier saying. And I know lots of people have lots of questions, so I'll just ask one more on enforcement and maybe this is for your interim chief, Baird, or you, Mr. Powers. The task force is recommending some significant increases in enforcement of the pedestrian-related ordinances and traffic laws. And my sense is that there's certainly no magic here and there aren't officers sitting around, you know, doing nothing. So additional enforcement in this area either requires, would require more officers or more overtime, or would mean that some other element of policing might be sacrificed. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to this a bit.
Well, I think this task force recommendation is intended to provide policy advice to city council. If city council agrees with the priorities that have been identified by the task force and direct staffs proceed with developing the recommended action plan, we could certainly come back to you with the specifics of.
Okay.
Of resources. As was stated at the beginning of the presentation, it really is a question of priorities and once council provides a direction on those priorities, staff will develop the required implementation plans.
Okay, thank you very much. One of the presenters in committee, Mr. Jansen, you know, said that the predominant theme at these various meetings that you had was we need more enforcement. So that does seem like a major area of, a major recommendation and area of concern. So thanks. And I may, my colleague here, you know, had some surgery, so he, some of us here will be asking his questions.
Councilmember Brier, when he can raise his hand.
Yes, exactly.
So.
Or pass notes.
Or pass notes. I'm going to start with my own. I want to thank the members of the commission, the committee. Honestly, appreciate all the work that you did and the way, in the end, the report responded to the requests that council made of you. I know that's a real challenge because we asked you to tackle a lot of information and come back with a pretty significant amount of recommendations to this body. I have a couple of questions that I can't quite get my hands around. Part of the problem is that you all reference ASHTO and NECTO as resources for determining street design and crosswalk location. This is a great thing, but those are tools that are not available to the general public and certainly not easily available to anyone without a big pocket full of money because they're pretty expensive documents to acquire. I'm wondering if you think it would be at all useful to produce some document for the public that explains in broad strokes why this is a good location for a crosswalk or why this intersection is designed the way it is, based on those criteria? Ken, I'll look at you.
Yes, the ASHTO documents, actually, the Green Book, of course, is horrendously expensive. The pedestrian recommendations aren't that expensive, but even so, there's a great deal of background you need to understand what they're talking about. There's also the MUTCD, which is available for free online, which is part of the guidance we were giving. We could produce some kind of, at least a bibliography of some sort with references to where those documents are. A lot of those actual documents, however, are copyrighted, so how much could actually be taken out under fair use would be a great question.
Right.
And that might be a good question for staff as well. They may be able to produce that more easily than certainly our task force.
Perfectly understandable. I found myself a little frustrated as I get requests for improved signage at a crosswalk or that this particular crosswalk is a problem and I have nothing I can turn to to help me address those concerns, except to pass it on to staff, which is fine, but it's really nice if I know some of the answers. And so on behalf of my silent colleague, Councilmember Westphal asks, well, states, police traffic citations and warnings are flat or declining over the past couple of years. I believe about 30% of police time is unassigned, so it seems there's room for increased action. But are warnings as effective as tickets? And I suspect that's really for you, Mr. Powers.
Certainly, staff can take questions tonight and get back to you with these specific answers. It wasn't our intention tonight to have a staff rebuttal to, or defense of what the task force is recommending.
Nor was it this question intended.
And certainly, on some questions, some definitions and some additional information regarding, for example, unassigned time would probably be helpful before council makes conclusions regarding the reallocation of resources.
Thank you. I agree. That's all for me, though I know that I've got a lot of things on my plate that I'm looking at now that this report is out.
Councilmember Warplewski?
I too would like to thank the committee members and the staff for their one and a half years of hard work. I have two specific questions. These are kind of more generic, conceptual or philosophical questions. Recently, I went for the M-City opening with the driverless cars and of course I was going from boot to boot and everything there seemed to be pointing towards uniform law and because these cars are going to be driven by computers, right? It's not people who are driving. So it just seems to be counterintuitive, what you are suggesting, one of your suggestion, which is kind of saying we need to be encouraging local-level laws and local-level. I thought it would be the other way around. We would be going towards more universal laws because these machines can't, maybe they can be, but, and I used to think about this with AATA too. they can be, but, and I used to think about this with AATA too. I mean, do AATA bus drivers stop pedestrians at crosswalks in Ann Arbor? Because the same bus, the same driver, they are like going through so many more jurisdictions. So for me, it just seems like it would be more, I mean, it would be better to have more kind of state-level consistent laws than to be having all this, if you really believe in regionalism and regionalism to work. So it's kind of, okay, thank you.
That's a great question, and I'm going to wade into danger here. With all respect to my UMTD colleagues, they will tell you, for example, that if there's snow on the ground, that the cars may not be able to read things, if there's fall leaves. So there, those will perhaps be solved. But there's going to be a long time of transition. There's going to be a very awkward period of human drivers and auto drivers, cyborg. So it's a good question, but it's a long-term question. It's, I would say, one of the things we struggled with as a, or dealt with as a task force is there's, on the one hand, there's a huge amount of very local knowledge that is very important, that the way people cross on Seventh Street is very different than Huron or Fuller, and we really need to find ways to take advantage of that very local knowledge because it's not standardized and it can't be unless we had a completely perfect grid in the city. And yet, we can't wing it and make it up on our own. And what's reassuring is that there are all sorts of state and national standards that we need to take advantage of. I would say the compromise is, one interpretation would be, there are standards, but there, those standards have led to many deaths. Not that they have, but they haven't prevented as many deaths as you would like. So it may be a floor, but not a ceiling. And I would say that those communities that are innovative within the context of best practice, not making it up as they go along, but really drawing upon best practices across the country are able to reduce traffic fatalities. So there is this kind of tension between standardization and innovation within that context. And I look forward to seeing you and your automated car.
Councilmember Konsol.
Thank you. I too want to give my thanks to the task force. It really started in April of 2013. This has been a long time. I realize that you put a lot of effort into this. My, how time flies. One of the things that kind of struck me, though, is that all this focus on the pedestrians, but not pedestrian responsibility. I heard one of the task force members talk about an example of a jaywalking, but there's no recommendation for a jaywalking ordinance proposed by the task force. And I would like to know why. We know that, I understood what somebody said, that there's no crosswalk ordinance at the state level, but the Michigan Vehicle Code is a law, and the Michigan Vehicle Code does say that a pedestrian can cross the street as long as it does not impede traffic anywhere, basically. So if a pedestrian does impede traffic, it is violating the Michigan Vehicle Code. It can be given a ticket. So why aren't we concentrating on enforcing pedestrians, especially up on campus, for stepping out between parked cars on State Street, causing all these cars to stop? We know that we have a lot of young pedestrians in our downtown, and it seems like they're the ones that need enforcement of some sort, not the drivers that are trying to dodge them. And so again, why is it that there was no responsibility put on some pedestrians?
I think, I'll start with a quick response, and then Ken can follow up. Dave Askins said to me that pedestrians are like deer, and you never know what they're going to do, and you can't stop them from what they're going to do. And therefore, the response to pedestrians should be the same as you have for deer, which is slow down. So that really meant a lot to me when I heard that from Dave. But Ken can follow up more tech.
Uniform, the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code, I believe is what you were referring to, and Ann Arbor has adopted, well, the actual, MVC doesn't have that, but Uniform Traffic Code does.
Vehicle Code.
Very specifically does.
I've looked at the Michigan Vehicle Code.
Okay. Well, Ann Arbor's already adopted that.
Yeah, those are standards.
And yes, it is illegal to cross if you impede traffic somewhere outside of an existing crosswalk or between adjacent intersections that are signalized. One of the things we discussed as a task force was making a recommendation that we paint curbs to indicate to pedestrians where it would be illegal for them to cross because it's actually fairly rare. Has to be in a business district, has to be between adjacent intersections that are signalized without any definition of what adjacent signalized intersections means. So in reality, most places on campus, it's legal for pedestrians to cross wherever they want, as long as they do perpendicular to the curb and not interfering with the flow of traffic, yielding to any traffic on the street at the time. The other thing that we did recommend is we have a recommendation for enforcement against pedestrians as well, but the FHWA recommends against ticketing. That's not us. That was the FHWA recommended a progression of enforcement against motorists and enforcement against pedestrians, but not actual ticketing, warnings against, to pedestrians. I don't know the reason for that. They indicated that...
Why wouldn't the task force actually go a little bit above and beyond that and make a recommendation on ticketing pedestrians?
There were a lot of topics like that, that the task force didn't feel it was appropriate to go that far. I'll give you an example of light traffic video cameras. In Washtenaw County, the Sheriff's Department has bought video cameras, not to actually use for enforcement specifically, but to record events so they can go back later and say, my goodness, this intersection really does have a problem. We're going to target enforcement for that intersection. We considered that and decided that was just too Big Brother. There are a lot of things like that that we did consider, but we decided not to take any action on or actually voted down the proposal.
Okay. I think it's an important question, and I don't want to give immunity to pedestrians. And I think one thing we encountered was, there's a lot of mutual biases and prejudices. People blaming the students for being oblivious, people blaming the bicyclists, people blaming the cars. And so I think we tried to, we kind of, as a task force, promoted a system that didn't evolve into mutual blame, but neither mutual immunity. I guess, secondly, what impressed me was, at the beginning of the task force, I thought it'd be simple, just design cities so people don't die. But then you discover that pedestrians and drivers and bikes involve human nature, even more complicated than deer. And I think we realized that you can't fix human nature, but can we develop a system that the inevitable mistakes and absent-mindedness and texting and distracted actions are less likely to cause injury and death? So a kind of forgiving system. There was one issue that I'm going to look at, Norm Cox, if he might remember, who was great with us with the Greenway Collaborative. I think it had to do with enforcement issues of, was it ticketing pedestrians versus drivers? And if I'm not mistaken, that issues about enforcing pedestrian citations was proven by the literature not effective, but I may misread that.
Distracted pedestrians.
All right.
Could you come to the microphone, please?
I think the research that he was referring to has to do with distracted driving and distracted pedestrians. And what it was finding, that basically distracted pedestrians did not endanger themselves significantly more than someone who was not distracted by some type of mobile device. But the drivers definitely had a serious impact on safety.
The, there's been a number of federal studies on enforcement as a method of education for both motorists and pedestrians. And for whatever reason, the results of most of those have shown that violations and citations are much more effective for motorists. And in fact, one report that we looked at said that more frequent citations with lower penalties for motorists are a more effective deterrent than fewer citations with a higher penalty, and that for pedestrians, education and warnings were more effective than citations. That's what the research has shown. And I guess, I guess the only other point I would make is, bottom line, as a matter of laws of physics, the pedestrian always is going to be on the losing end of these things. So it's, it's the emphasis on motorists that is there for a lot of different reasons, I think.
Trying to get my train of thought again here. We were talking about enforcements, and I think Councilmember Westfall wrote down his question regarding revenues had been falling. And they've fallen quite substantially, if I recall, going way back to when our department, basically, the police department was cut from over 200 employees down to about 120. All right? Majority of your recommendations are talking about increased enforcement, but, and that is obviously something that council will have to deal budget-wise. You're not going to get a level of enforcement that I think that the task force is hoping to attain with 120 uniformed police officers, even if they have 30% free time, which I don't think they do by any means that I can tell. During this whole process, since we started in April 2013 to September 2015, have you been in contact with the police department to find out how much has been enforced or how many tickets have been issued regarding our existing crosswalk ordinance? You know, from my impression is that it's an ordinance that is being ignored. It's an ordinance that is basically unenforceable because of what we're going to be talking about at the next council meeting, my ordinance amendments to insert the word "if" is safe to do so. Your report also makes comment that the multi-lane roads for crosswalks are very dangerous, which is what I've been saying from the get-go, that is very dangerous for a pedestrian to step into the blind spot of a stopped car where other cars cannot see them, and hence, that's why I wanted to make sure that the ordinance language reflected the language that the veto statement made. All right? Because if I was from out of town and got a, or got a ticket for a violation of sorts, I would go right to court and say, this is unenforceable. All right? Because we heard our city attorney's office say, well, if I remember that discussion, about when is it safe to do so? Right? So that's, those are some of my concerns, and that's where, so in, so that raises the other question of, you, the task force talks about putting stops for these multi-lane roads further back from the crosswalk. Is that done anywhere in Michigan? I mean, if you're making a recommendation that is not adhered to our Uniform Traffic Code, to all the standards that we use, then I might have to ask staff. Is that something that is, is that something that we can do?
The answer to the first question is that we had a meeting with Chief Cito, and the discussion document would outline exactly what we covered, and so that might help you to understand what it was he told us about enforcement and the discussion that we had about it.
Should we give you numbers of how many people are getting tickets, how much is being enforced, how much revenue's been generated, how much money's, or how many cases have gone to court? Okay. Okay.
So Connie says...
I mean, I just, yeah, so I know that, you know, from my experience on the taxi cab board, we know that there, you know, there were 62 tickets issued for state limousine license violations.
And of course, that's a moving target, if I can say, that because the crosswalk ordinance is still fairly new, those numbers have been changing, and perceptions have been changing over the months as well.
Well, but you even started out this discussion talking about there's 70,000 people that come in from out of this town that have no idea whatsoever that we have this special ordinance, the only one in the state. So how...
Right, and that's why we're looking at the comprehensive solutions rather than just the crosswalk ordinance, because it's a larger, larger issue and also can be addressed different ways, by traffic engineering, by educational efforts, by educating pedestrians as well, for sure. But there's no one, just fixing the crosswalk ordinance...
Oh, I agree.
We don't think we'll accomplish that much. But I think, Ken...
Sure. You are at eight o'clock.
Let Anthony talk. I just want to mention that this also tied into a lot of the equipment recommendations. Okay, that's also involving money, but the police chief did say that there was a marked increase in compliance over his time with their monitoring, when they didn't have, when they did have these monitoring actions, that for them, it was a great increase in compliance amongst motorists.
Councilmember Grant, it's eight o'clock.
Okay, can I just put in a request and not expect a response?
Please.
Can we do it that way, maybe? I have some questions about, I know there's lots of discussion in the community about signage, so if we can see maybe some examples from staff, but ideas for what signage might look like if we were to improve it. Especially, I'm interested in the gateway campaign signage and what that would look like. I'm sure there must be other university tourist communities that have crosswalk laws, and they maybe do this somewhere. So if there's some best practices for gateway signage, I'd like to see that. My questions about enforcement were answered, so thank you. Yeah, so those are the two things I'd like to see.
Councilmember Reddy, whom I cannot deny.
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank the committee for its hard work. I think that this report is quite balanced in total. I don't agree with every detail, but I find it really quite balanced. It has a call for increased enforcement, both on the pedestrian and the driver. It calls for meaningful design changes to make pedestrians safer, including consistent signage and signals, good sightlines and improved lighting at crosswalks. And it describes the need for a good education program. So overall, I'm really happy with the end product, and I thank you for your efforts.
Should we go to the snow and ice presentation? So we're back to PowerPoint. And this will hopefully be just be about 10 minutes. There's a lot of information to look at later on as well.
We have our... Okay. We had a subcommittee, Snow and Ice, so maintenance, subcommittee, that looked very closely at this right from the very start of the task force. And so I'm just going to, hang on, move right along here. Boom. All right, so if you forgive me for a little bit, some of this at the beginning is just reading what we've written up here. And so we wanted to basically, why are we here? Why are we talking about this topic here? Why was it so topical? So here, we're first going to define the goal, we have to define the means and the metrics, and we have then accommodate the exceptions. So why are we here? The number of pedestrians are rapidly increasing, young and old, working commuters, shoppers, students, and joggers. Everyone is demanding higher standards regarding snow and ice removal. The current ordinance and its enforcement are inadequate. There are a lot of frustrated residents demanding action after the last couple of winters, the ice-covered sidewalks that we all experienced. It's very topical this year, 25 years, compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act is mandatory. All users of our public walkways have a right to safe and unobstructed use of those walkways, and all property owners have the responsibility to ensure this right. Public awareness and willingness to embrace the full civil rights and needs of persons with disabilities have outpaced our outdated ordinance. More pedestrians in winter translates into fewer cars on winter roads and higher parking availability for those who have to drive. So even if one does just every day, if you get in your car from your house and drive to work, you benefit too by having a strong ice and removal ordinance because other people are walking. More people will walk, and they won't be driving. There we go. So our goal, what is the goal? What are we actually trying to achieve in this whole thing? The goal is, we want to clear all snow and ice accumulation from sidewalks, ramps, and crosswalks, and thereby empower safe access and mobility for everyone and not just for the few that can struggle through it. So we want to define the means and the metrics. Our vision for this is, we need to enact and enforce a snow and ice removal ordinance that brings the city in line with the vast majority of northern US cities, requiring complete removal and treatment within a specified short timeframe. Make the ordinance simple to understand and to enforce. Ensure it fulfills ADA requirements and ensure it eliminates residual depth allowances for snow and ice. Otherwise, you don't fulfill the goal. You still have the residual one inch of ice and snow. Accommodate the exceptions, though, and this is important. This is what a lot of the talk has been about in the recent months, a lot of the discussion. We need to proactively pursue strict compliance, but at the same time allow the same degree of fair discretionary enforcement as for any other city ordinance, based on objective assessment of conditions as well as firm pedestrian rights. Now, this is what the staff say, this is what the police say. Discretion, but based on framework, based on criteria. So, and we also have recommended in the report that, basically, there'd just be a collation of ideas and offerings to recommend low and no-cost... of ideas and offerings to recommend low and no-cost solutions for people who are in need. So, basically, all, whatever you want to call it, sides on this issue can be brought together, and then we can reach the goal, we can get rid of the snow and ice, and still help those people accommodate them who are unable to do so themselves. So, who are the stakeholders in this? Who makes the benchmarks, and who stands to benefit? Now, every single one of Ann Arbor's 114,000 inhabitants, everyone is a pedestrian. Increasing snow and ice accumulations and the surge of complaints to community standards in recent winters are driving proactive enforcement of our current ordinance. There's been more enforcement the last two months, and very important to understand is too, as was explained to us by staff, it's only been in the last, not two months, two years, in the last two years, or no, actually, just this last winter, the past winter, that their actual community standards people were authorized to issue citations on their own. Otherwise, they received training, and they were only then allowed to do so on their own. Before that, it was a process, I believe, involving the police and a back-and-forth. So, it was a lot slower, and it's important, and so, a combination of the weather and this authorization to do this greatly increased the number of citations. Right, so, something we have to really watch out for, pay attention to, and not just lip service, as the disabled disabilities community. The Ann Arbor Commission on Disability Issues and individual members of the commission have met with the task force on multiple occasions and contributed valuable knowledge, experience, and recommendations. Members of the task force have met with the University of Michigan Council on Disability Concerns to gain the council's informed insight into what is lacking to fully empower everyone now, in the 21st century. Some, a group that will complain the least to you and send you the fewest emails are disabled veterans, people at the VA hospital, people out and about. We want you and ask you particularly to listen to these people who complain the least about intolerable conditions, who remain silent and stoic out of a sense of duty. They deserve your respect and consideration just as much as those who speak first and write the longest emails. So, why are we here still? Climate change and changing snow and ice accumulations. Snow and ice accumulation patterns are changing here as everywhere else. It is undeniable. The task force has documented on its website Ann Arbor's snow and ice accumulation development over the past decade. The city must gear its legislation to meet the challenges we face. What's more, city inhabitants who have to drive will benefit greatly by creating an enabling environment that empowers and encourages others to walk in winter. Safe access is the key. So, another big question's been coming up, added cost for those contracting removal services. Ice and snow removal contractors already provide very low-cost services, and under the current ordinance, under the current ordinance we have, users of these services, provide these services, for an average Ann Arbor bungalow currently pay about $1 a day maximum. Most of them on a bungalow actually pay around $0.58 to $0.60 right now, per day, in the wintertime. Pricing of services that comply with a new ordinance, eliminating the one-inch removal threshold, may rise slightly. Yeah, they may rise a little bit. But like every free-market business in America, these highly flexible firms will not price themselves out of the market. They're not going to do that. The sector will remain highly competitive to meet demand. It works in every other American city, and will work here. The sector, firms in the sector state that until actual market pressure is active, that means until you enacted ordinance, and that ordinance is in force, that any pro forma quotations, these can be considered non-binding right now. Now, what I have for you, that I will, we will show to you right now, is I have one quotation here from what is basically the major snow removal company in Ann Arbor, the one that probably has the most business. And just so you know, this is already based on taking snow down to one-half an inch, unlimited deployments. I repeat, an unlimited number of deployments over a five-month period for a bungalow with house. This costs $88 for five months. You're at $0.50 per day, $0.50 per day, and that's to have unlimited deployment, that's not including putting de-icer assault on there, but this includes the main points that people are worried about. How many times will they come out? When will they come out? We've heard very often about, oh, they'll only come out for just over two inches, although our ordinance says, you know, this threshold of one inch. No, they will come out for half an inch right now, and they volunteer to come out for more, you know, for a price. But we are looking at $88 for a five-month period. All right, and I can give this to you, too. This is, okay, this is not, this is not in your packet, but I can give this to you. This is, so, say, this was not solicited by us, this is purposely taken from just a quotation given to someone in the Action at Burns Park area. So, I'm just going to wrap this up very quickly. The norm in northern cities, the norm in almost all northern cities, is, so, they require property owners to remove all accumulations of snow and ice within 24 hours at maximum. There's a lot of variation, there is all kinds of variation. You can talk about this for weeks, all the different, you know, timings they have on it. Many use, and this is very interesting, to make it simple, they use the immediate records of the National Weather Service to mark when snowfalls end. They make, they do the records anyway, they do for Ann Arbor. The snowfall ends here, okay. They do not, most of these northern cities do not allow a one-inch threshold like Ann Arbor's, because it is this negligible one inch that causes the melt and the refreeze, and it causes the hard layer of impassable ice. And the Ann Arbor's Commission on Disability has asked directly, directly, and I quote this, "Why can't we eliminate the one-inch threshold and make Ann Arbor our best place to live for persons with disabilities, too?" We all want to be on these lists. Let's include the disabilities people as well. On this page, you see, this is just, just an example, just examples, those cities on the left all require removal of all accumulation, many of them within 12 hours. Cities like Chicago, actually, they're, in the afternoon, you only have four hours to remove snow. So, you can see in the lower right, cities that allow one, two, and four-inch snow clearing thresholds. Here, you see on this next page, some very important tools. The tools of the trade for removing accumulations of one-inch or less are simple, fast, and effective. Now, what you see there in that bag is the, is the material that has now been recommended by the environmental committee here in Ann Arbor, Environmental Commission, magnesium chloride, magnesium chloride, as opposed to salt. It's environmentally friendly, but it does the job, it gets it done. You've received this letter from them. So, moving on, do we now have the snow and ice removal recommendations? Owen, would you like to read these, or just read these down for them?
No, you go ahead.
Yeah, okay, okay, well, just, we don't maybe need to touch on, we don't need to touch on all of these, but anyway. Our prime request at the top, strengthen the snow, the sidewalk snow removal ordinance by requiring removal of all accumulation, and we are saying what is considered best practice, 12 hours. Best practice, 12 hours. Now, a lot of people, there'll be a lot of debate about this, but we, our duty to you is to give you what is considered best practice around the country. And there's a lot of places doing this, very comparable peer cities to us. Enforcement is to be proactive, but, and not merely complaint-driven, not merely complaint-driven. At the same time, discretionary assessment, fair but firm. Fair but firm. So, important, too, provide single warning, one warning for violators per winter season. They don't need more than that. Otherwise, you just waste time, you waste our resources on the police and on the community standards, okay? Choose the existing enforcement loophole, wait, sorry, I can't read in the document. Close. There's a loophole right now, Ken can explain this to you very well, right now, that allows violators off-the-hook when snow falls, within, and there's a clearance window there until the next snowfall. So, he can explain that very well. But, very important, establish an enforcement appeal process, so people that feel they have an unfairly fairly hit, they should have a right to appeal and say, hey, come on, guys, look at this. So, establish a sidewalk snow assistance removal program, including public and private nonprofit partnerships, so everybody has access to say, right, okay, you need some help, you can get it right here. Disabled residents and other residents who meet clearly defined, fair, and measurable criteria can all have access to this. Improve and expand city crews' road snow removal practices to eliminate snow piles and ice wedges at intersections and mid-block, mid-block crosswalks, and assist and enforce clearance of sidewalk ramps. All right, the recommendations go on to the final page. Implement a sidewalk snow removal education campaign, and this is something where you guys can do this quite easily, via the city publications on people's summer and winter property bills. They get those, because you all know how hard it is to reach people nowadays. There's the, the print newspaper's not there anymore, the radio's not there anymore with public service announcements, but you can do it on the water bills, you can do it on the city's websites. Anyway, so, next point. Clarify and assign responsibility for clearing snow and ice from bus stops. This is, topic has come up. The staff have sent you information, the replies that shows how many bus stops are in the city limits, how many are being cleared currently by the ride, and so, it will be, matter comes down to, there's about 650 property owners that have a patch of sidewalk in front of them, in front of their house, that is supposed to be cleared, and under the current, current law. And just, it's basically just making people aware of that, and they can be told that individually on their property tax form, and it says it right there. Publicize the sidewalk snow assistance removal program that networks those in need with low-cost and no-cost solutions. There's lots of no-cost solutions. There are all the teams at all the high schools, they're all looking for projects like this to make money, to go on their trips. They want to volunteer. There's still kids in the neighborhood that'll do this for five bucks and 10 bucks, you know, for a week or a couple of weeks. Anyway, so, there's other recommendations there, you can read about them in detail in the report. Sorry.
And there's your next slide.
Oh, yes, yeah, my next slide. So, this is important, guys, check this out. We all get by with a little help from our friends, right? And snow and ice removal is mutual help, it's mobility for everyone. Ann Arbor's better when we do it all together. And say, this is about being courteous, being helpful, and just getting the whole thing cleared off, as almost all cities in the north do. We just cannot be an exception. It's, it's, we're too much an exception.
Thank you. He has great passion for the subject.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'll be quick, I'm sure you have a lot of questions about this. First, I want to apologize for having you talk about snow and ice in this nice sunny warm fall weather we've got, but we got to do it. And as Tony has pointed out, the recommendations that we're proposing here are not coming just from us. We heard an awful, awful lot about snow and ice and the inadequacy of the system over the past couple of years from all of our public engagement process. I mean, it's clearly a system that's broken and needs to be fixed. We've got more and more people walking, and it's clearly not just an issue of enforcement, although that's part of it. Part of it is increased enforcement, but part of it is also having the standards in the ordinance that we need to have to make our sidewalks fully accessible and safe for everyone in the city, including the elderly and disabled. One of the things that I'm going to give to Steve to pass around is a compendium of some of the ordinances and the wording of other cities in the country, and these are all municipalities that do not have a depth trigger or a depth threshold, it's just remove all snow and ice, and they are all, they all require this to be done in less than 24 hours, some of them in the matter of three or four hours. I think in our consideration of all of these different ordinances that we looked at, I think we felt that 24 hours that is in the current ordinance was just not sufficient. It just doesn't do the job. 12 hours in a way was, in some ways, a compromise that takes into consideration the fact that there's a lot of people that work out of town, and they're gone all day. I mean, if you read some of these ordinances from other municipalities, and they talk about all the snow and ice needing to be cleaned up, cleaned up within two or three hours after the snowfall ends. Well, if it ends in the middle of the day, it's pretty tough to do if everyone's away at work. So, we felt 12 hours was a reasonable compromise between what were some rather draconian sorts of measures in 24 hours.
Any questions?
Pardon me? Okay, well.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the floor? Councilor Thompson.
Thank you. The very first thing that caught my attention was something about community standards issuing citations, or having more authority to issue citations than they'd had before, and I was a little confused by that, because as far as I know, they're not sworn officers and cannot issue citations directly to individuals. Is that what you were thinking that they were doing?
They, as of this past winter.
You have to come up to the microphone.
Not to ask Mr. Powers to speak to that, but a community standards is not a sworn officer and cannot ask me for my ID to give me a ticket. So, they can't be issuing citations for snow removal to property owners just by knocking on their door.
Well, this information was given to us by the city staffers, Eli Cooper, and the head of community standards, that they had all had training over the past two years ago, and that was then implemented, and this is the first season, this past season, this is what we understood, that they've been allowed to do that.
So, there might be a different method of going out there, but I'm sure they're not issuing tickets directly.
What the process, well, what the process and procedure, they, they.
I would simply say we'll ask the chief for clarification on what direction his staff was giving.
All right, and I have no problem with the fact that community standards have, you know, increased their efforts to clear, to make sure that property owners are clearing their sidewalks. That's not the issue.
And they did specifically tell us that they, if they're called to one house on the block, they now look at the entire block.
Right, right, they're not going to just pick out on one person, they're going to go for the whole block. They do that also for grass cutting in neighborhoods as well, so, that we know. And it's great that they might be increasing their efforts because of the issues that we are familiar with. So, again, I hear lots of enforcement talk, lots of enforcement talk. We don't have quite all the people that we would like to have, that we've had in the past, to do lots of enforcement. And we've been given some examples of ordinances, and I appreciate, you know, this information, because it's something that I don't keep on the top of my head, especially when it's 85 degrees outside. But the first one that caught my attention is Warren, Michigan, okay? Says, "Removal of snow and ice. The occupant of any premises or the owner of unoccupied premises is required to keep the sidewalks in front of, or adjacent to such premises cleared so far as is practical, practicable, and reasonable from snow and ice to facilitate pedestrian use." If that's not vague, I don't know what is, all right? If we want to go to an ordinance to that level, just to remove the one inch, you know, when you insert practicable and reasonable, and I'm sure I can pronounce the word correctly, practicable or reasonable, all right, that is vague.
Steve, the last section, the last sentence in that section reads, "Whenever any snow or ice has fallen or accumulated, it shall be cleared within 12 hours after it has fallen or accumulated."
Right, but you're, again, practical or reasonable, all right? So, when you have that kind of, you know, ordinance language, again, these are words on the paper, our objective is to get the sidewalks cleared. There's going to be a lot more effort than just changing words in an ordinance to get the kind of community buy-in that we're asking for in terms of all this. I just want to put that out there because.
There are, we've submitted to you, there's also dozens and dozens and dozens of examples.
Right.
For the most part, for the most part, all across the northern belt, the snow belt, these qualifiers, this if reasonable, if possible, if practicable, are not there. They are not there. Throughout Wisconsin, throughout Minnesota, it's just, do it, do it, clear it.
And I've been in New York City when there's still snow on the, you know, that has not been shoveled, so I'm not exactly, you know.
We all, we all, we all roll our car through a stop sign sometimes.
Right.
That's the longest stop, but we roll our car through.
So, we're back to this whole idea of more enforcement, more enforcement, well, that's great, I would like to have more enforcement if we want to have more money in our budget for it, so leave it at that.
Councilor Blount.
Thanks. The response to the question about the question that had been asked previously about the city taking over responsibility of the, for sidewalk snow removal, staff had indicated the cost would be $2.7 million annually with one-time equipment cost of $1 million. And while the task force isn't recommending complete takeover at this time, only that it be considered, the task force is recommending, quote, "Improve and expand city crews' road snow removal practices to eliminate roadway snow piles and..." and ice ridges at intersection and mid-block crosswalks and bus stops, assist and enforce clearance of sidewalk ramps. So I'm not exactly sure what that entails, I'm thinking staff probably does. Do we have, um, any sense of what the incremental cost would be for this kind of work ongoing in one time? Thank you, Mr. Hoopie.
It's gonna be counterintuitive, but when we look at it, it is more expensive than clearing all the sidewalks. Because when you're clearing all the sidewalks, you're going down, uh, you're starting at the block, going through the block, and back out at the other end. When you're just clearing the, the sidewalk ramps, you're mobilizing from location to location, so it actually turns out to be more expensive.
Okay.
So I would use the estimate for clearing all sidewalks as the bottom end of the estimate of clearing just the ramps.
Okay, that's helpful, thanks. Um, and on the, there was a slide that referenced the contracting out snow and ice removal services, and thank you for copying this contract, that says you can do it for $89 a season, which is, um, a good deal, obviously, uh, but it says that, quote, "Users of these services for an average Ann Arbor bungalow pay about $1 a day." So I know a dollar sounds good, um, but I'm wondering if you could translate that to a cost number per season, I mean, are you, are you talking $1 a day for four months, six months?
Obviously, the, the property, you know, the length of the property, for some of the, uh, these contractors, they will sell you over the phone, oh no, uh, really unless you have a giant property, there's no difference in the price. If we have to come out, we come out. Um, the, uh, this, as you say, that this one comes to about 50 cents a day, in that, during that, uh, during the, or maybe 58 cents, uh, during that time period. Um, whether, whether it comes to a dollar, you know, it, when everything then is included as far as removing the final, or if they want to come out and sweep that bit for you, um, the, I, you know, you cannot say that until you have a free market situation where they, where they give you a bid for it.
Right, okay, and then the slide also went on to say that the cost may rise, quote, slightly if the one-inch threshold is eliminated, and then again, in response to a council question previously, staff had indicated that for an average year, there are 18 occurrences of snow more than one inch and 53 occurrences of any accumulation. So, so there'd be almost, um, three times the number of, of events, uh, a contractor would have to deal with, so, given that, I'm wondering...
But we don't, I don't, I don't have a figure there for how many, how many snowfalls are that are less than a half an inch, but that contract clearly states...
Well, 18, yeah, this was...
They come from unlimited deployments over one, over a half an inch, unlimited deployments.
Thanks, well, maybe I'll follow with staff, because I'm just...
Is it an aggregate, though? I mean, this is more than one person at a time?
No, that's a single.
I'm, I, I will drill down more with staff, I guess, because I'm just wondering how, you know, that, that we could arrive at this conclusion that the cost would just rise slightly, given what staff had shared previously on, you know, the number of snowfalls and all of that. And then just one quick, last question, um, when you say enforce proactively, what do you, what exactly do you mean by that?
Well, the community standards people do enforce proactively, for example, um, on, um, they come more through, I know they come through the whole student section looking for trash violations, and they do come through in the wintertime proactively, already, already, looking for, um, you know, the snow and ice violations. Uh, I've seen it, we've, you know, we see it in our neighborhoods. Um, uh, because we don't want it to be just complaint-driven, one, because too many people feel like, oh, I don't want to call about my neighbors.
So not complaint-driven, so maybe just have community standards people out and about, just looking for...
They, as they, as they do, as, as they do already, they have a form of patrolling, I guess, or a pattern.
Actually, it's complaint-driven.
Sorry, what?
It is complaint-driven, like most of our ordinances.
Well, yes, it's...
But if they're out in, if, if they've received a call, it's my understanding of how it works, uh, they will look at the block, the extended, yeah?
But you, you remember, remember the effect of once, once, one, um, and this, this comes back to the policing thing, too, that once, you know, the word gets around, it's just like tickets, you know, for speeding tickets, the word gets around, and when people have gotten a fine, a citation, the word spreads, and so this policing effect, as was explained to us by, by, by the police chief as well, it, it then the occurrence of having to, you know, the...
Yeah, and I just, you know, when you say the word gets around, actually, I think our community does a really good job, and one thing that I remember distinctly is in response, staff's response to a question I asked about, uh, the, I, the response once a notice is issued, and I just, I've seen this personally in our ward, uh, people do a good job, and they're very alarmed if they get a notice, and I've been told countless times, Jane, they didn't get a notice, they didn't get a citation, it was just a notice, uh, they take care of it, and, uh, and the responsiveness, where we don't have to go back out and issue a citation because they've taken care of it, is, is, you know, it's, it was like in the 70, 80-plus percentile, so, anyway, someone else, thanks.
Councilman Grant.
Thank you. Um, and I didn't thank the task force earlier because I was hurrying, but thank you very much for all your work, this is great, and I'm glad that we're spending some time talking about this issue that will come up, uh, very shortly, again, and getting some time to ask questions. Um, I see a lot of stick in here and not as much carrot. Um, did the task force talk about ways that, I mean, I think this is such a big cultural shift, much like, much of the report, um, is just, for example, just getting people to learn that they have to stop when they see someone in a crosswalk, that they're not, um, you know, that, that you don't just necessarily drive as, as fast as you can, and that someone, um, in the crosswalk is, you know, ruining your day by using it. So, um, so this, this snow issue, I think, is really a, a culture change in addressing ice. Have you, did you think about ways other than, um, the educational campaign about making it, I did see, you know, making, um, ice mitigation resources, um, more readily available, were there other things that you discussed that didn't make it into this report?
Well, while they're considering, I think the part of the, the...
The carrot has been the added visibility of this topic, which you have all been responsible for as well, and I think also talking about it as an ADA issue, um, has really changed the discussion as well. So those are, those are two things that we did discuss, and...
Yeah, just, um, yeah, I, I heard a lot about the carrot and stick analogy, and it seems to me that the carrot is that, uh, with the recommendations we're making it for changes in the ordinance, we would make public sidewalks in Ann Arbor safer and more accessible for everybody in the city. None of us get a carrot for stopping at a stop sign. The carrot is, when we all stop at stop signs, it makes the streets safer for all of us. So it seems to me that's, that's the biggest carrot here. And I just want to mention two quotes from the Disability Commission's resolution that you have. Uh, "The Commission on Disability Issues believes it is in the best interest of the disability community that sidewalks are consistently cleared of snow and ice in a manner which mandates full access as section 35.133 of the revised final Title II regulations required, and any snow or ice on the ground can be a barrier for people with disabilities. The Commission recommends that all accumulation of snow and ice be removed and ice be treated using sand salt and other suitable substances as treatments to facilitate fully accessible pedestrian use." I think actually the change from 24 hours to 12 hours, and the elimination of the one-inch, uh, uh, depth trigger, is really not a hardship for, it's not a really draconian measure that's going to, I think, be difficult for most people.
Three quick points. First, it's a great question about carrots, and to be honest, I don't think we looked at that too much, um, but maybe it's worthwhile. I do think the idea of providing, uh, environmentally friendly, um, anti-icing materials might be a start. Um, I think one thing for us to remember is that, uh, nine sidewalks can be cleared, and the 10th one makes the whole system not work. Uh, it's worse than a sidewalk gap. Uh, a sidewalk gap is easier to walk across someone's lawn, um, so I think that it's important to realize that 100% compliance is important because 90% makes it unwalkable. Two, I think that, I think one of the tricky issues here, and I'm sure it'll come up with your deliberations, is when you encounter a sidewalk that's not cleared, do you envision a poor grandmother or someone who is disabled who cannot come out on a fixed income, or some young male slob who's watching a football game, who just doesn't bother to come out, sorry for the stereotypes? And the fact that there are, um, it's, uh, closed doors and windows, you don't know, and so I think a lot of this debate is informed by people trying to speculate the motivation for why that sidewalk, and we can't figure that out, so if there's a way to bypass that motivation, that'd be useful. Finally, I think that, um, I would say, as a planner, often we're trying to figure out what's a public responsibility and what's a private, um, and I think sidewalks are that kind of curious public-private partnership or in-between. Um, and in some ways, it's yours and on your property, but in some ways, it's not, you're providing a public service, and so, um, I think that causes some of this confusion. But, um, that's what civic people do, is they sometimes take care of things on their property for the public.
Okay. Um, I just had a quick thought, uh, oh, sure, go ahead.
I walk my kids to school, to Northside, every day, all winter long, me and my wife, every year that they went to Northside School. The carrot is that all of the kids I see in my neighborhood now who, for the past few days, have been walking with their parents to school, might actually still get to do it all the winter. They really want to, but I can tell you, when the snow flies and the ice starts building up on sidewalks, they're all gonna try it one day with their boots on and give it up. We have an awful lot of young kids and young families in the city that really could use proper clearing of the sidewalks, not to mention my 99-year-old neighbor who would like to be able to walk somewhere. There are some carrots, but it's hard to see unless you're one of the people who's been disenfranchised so far.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up with that, that, I think we get that, and advocates get that, but we're talking about large, as, um, Scott pointed out, that we're talking, we want 100% compliance or close to it, and that's large-scale behavior change, which is going to require that you believe the benefits are greater than the barriers or the enforcement, so, um, I think we're gonna need to have that discussion on the table about how we can actually, um, get everyone to where all of you wonderful advocates are. Um, and then the magnesium chloride was mentioned, do we have a cost for that, or could Steph get us a cost?
A cost for what?
Uh, the magnesium chloride is the Environmental Commission's preferred ice melt, do we know what that...
Per square yard, per, what do you want?
Uh...
What do you expect also?
Right, I mean, what would it cost a homeowner to use that would be helpful, and, um, if we were to maybe consider providing it, or in, or, um, maybe like we do with the compost program where we had the compostable bags that cost, maybe we could consider doing something like that as well, what would that look like?
Thanks, Scott, you get that for you?
Thank you.
Further questions? Do you have any other presentation from the task force? Any closing remarks? None are necessary. Steve?
I, I guess the one thing I would say is that obviously the task force is extremely passionate about all of these topics and all the recommendations, and, uh, I think that most of us are definitely considering that although our official role is over, um, we want to be, uh, participating in moving this forward and also, um, providing any answers or further discussion that would be helpful, and, uh, definitely hope that you'll continue to call on us, and particularly, uh, some members would be interested in serving on an additional committee, um, and we're hoping that that happens as well. So, uh, it's not the end for us at this point.
Well, we certainly hope not. I should say that, uh, you know, sort of echoing a theme from the, from the table, uh, what we have here is, uh, is a tremendous work product. Uh, there are actionable recommendations here and important observations and thoughts, and, uh, it's, um, uh, things pedestrian are of growing importance to so many of us in the city for a wide variety of reasons, uh, and, uh, this is, I think, a great and important step to getting us to where we want to be, so, thank you. Uh, we are at 8:45 at the, or, or nearly at the end of our work session, and per council rules, it is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council in the community about matters of municipal interest. Uh, you need not to have signed up in advance. Uh, each speaker will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock, and we can have only one person speaking at a time, uh, and if you require assistance in speaking before council today, we'd be delighted to provide it to you. Uh, is there anyone who'd like to come and speak to us before council? Please.
Thank you, I'm Sally Hart Peterson, I'm chair of the, uh, Ann Arbor Commission on Disability Issues. I, too, want to thank the task force for including us in their several meetings and for also providing the necessary accommodations to ensure full participation of our commissioners in their meetings. That said, I also want to address council member Grant's, um, question about what didn't quite make the list of recommendations. There, as you know, our commission sent a, a recommendation resolution to council to consider a number of things. There are three things that didn't quite make priority that I, I don't want to gloss over, um, yet they're not inconsistent with any of the other recommendations, so I just want to draw your attention to them. The first is the, has to do with the interpretation of ADA law, specifically Title II regulations. Um, there is an interpretation that the city should be responsible for maintaining its public property, um, including walkways, and that is a question that we have raised, um, with the city attorney's office, and my understanding is that we'll be given a priority for research in terms of, uh, uh, further understanding, um, the complexity of ADA law. It is complex, um, it's not an easy, there's no easy answer to that, is the city responsible or not, that's up to several interpretations, and, um, my understanding is that the city attorney's office will in fact, um, continue to research that and keep council updated. The second piece is with respect, um, to what I'll refer to as the equity issue, um, the elimination of the one-inch standard for homeowners, um, as compared to the city's current protocol to not plow streets until there's four inches of snow. To me, to me, to, to homeowners, this feels inequitable, that the city is holding homeowners to a higher standard than the city is able to accomplish itself when it comes to clearing the roads from, um, the snow plows activities and clearing the roads themselves. And the third thing actually did make the priority, um, make, make their recommendations, but not as a priority, and that is with regard to sidewalk snow assistance removal, the sidewalk snow assistance removal program. Um, there needs to be stronger language in the ordinance to define who has a financial hardship or a physical hardship, and there needs to be protocols put in place to underline that. And finally, um, I'm gonna speak now as a member of the Ann Arbor Commission on Disability Issues and a member of the U of M Council on Disability Concerns. I heard today that, um, the pedestrian crossing ordinance may come back. One thing you might want to do is check with U of M police, they, my understanding is that they are not allowed to enforce local, um, law, and so, you might want to consider that.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda Evans, um, vice chair, Ann Arbor Commission on Disability Issues, but I'm going to speak on me as a citizen today. Um, one of the questions asked underneath the, um, crosswalk recommendations was, where are the priorities within the priorities? Me specifically would like to see the bramble strips before the crosswalk stop area, so that a person who is totally blind cannot see what the RFP is doing, cannot see what the cars are doing, can hear that car in a two or four, four-lane intersection and know whether there's something coming or not. They can pause in front of a car that they know stopped and listen to see if there's something else coming. So that would be my presentation of the whole thing for crosswalks. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public here, public comment?
Good evening, Kathy Griswold. I have personally thanked the task force members for their work, and I'd like to publicly thank the group at this time. However, we also, in addition to all the work that the task force has done, we need to be realistic, because students today are not significantly safer than they were 30 years ago, 20 years ago, 10 years ago. Ann Arbor is a pedestrian-friendly community in this room and at some cocktail parties, but reality, when you have a student trying to cross the road in the dark in a poorly-marked crosswalk, it's not pedestrian-friendly. road in the dark, in a poorly marked crosswalk, it's not pedestrian-friendly, the city has taken two years to schedule the painting of the crosswalk on the Broadway Bridge, that is inexcusable, I'd like to make three points tonight, the first one is, our leaders must construct to best practices, there's no excuse not to, number two, we must fund projects, we have underfunded pedestrian infrastructure by over ten million dollars in the last decade, talking doesn't do a thing but make people feel good in this room, number three, we must engage all stakeholders, we must develop a team approach, that means pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, that is what progressive cities are doing, taking a holistic approach, as someone on the task force mentioned, and all of this can be done with the assistance of the Michigan Department of Transportation and their campaign towards vision, towards zero deaths, MDOT has been available to help other cities, I was just reading an article tonight, they gave twenty, no, two-hundred thousand dollars to two communities to put up the signs that say, "Local law yield for a pedestrian," so let's start working together, and let's start making meaningful improvements, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Chris Hewitt from Save Our Streets Ann Arbor, I would also like to thank the task force for all of their hard work, they've done a lot of good work on the report, I know there was a lot of recommendations and a lot of issues brought up in the report, but I hope there's one issue that we can all agree upon, and it's the speeds on our streets, we have really high speeds through our neighborhoods, you know, this has been evidenced through, you know, the last two years on average, we've had two rollovers on Main Street, our main pedestrian promenade, we have really high speeds on many of our neighborhoods, which we have shown in hundreds of pictures and videos on our site, and on bike-to-school day, the kids can't even use the bicycle lanes, or don't feel safe using them, because traffic speeds are so high, they don't use them, so we're investing in infrastructure that people don't feel safe using, so I would just recommend that we, first, you know, one of the cheapest things we can do is, why are we not conforming to the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, section two-five-seven-six-two-seven, sections two and three state that any road within a half-mile where there are sixty or more vehicle access points, so it's roads, alleys, et cetera, the speed should be twenty-five miles per hour, this would greatly reduce cost to the city, it would standardize things in a way where the seventy thousand people we talked about that are coming into the city will know it's more standard, they won't question whether, is this road forty, is this road thirty, is this one twenty-five, they'll learn and get to know that there's a standard in the city which conforms to the state law, so I would just encourage you guys to address the speeds, you know, it helps everyone, it increases driver reaction times, which we know will help everyone involved, in cars, bikes, walking, et cetera, and I would also like to speak to what Kathy mentioned on crosswalks and uniformity in the city, for example, the two crossings on Seventh that we just put in, you know, to this date, two are marked now with the paint, but two, there was one that still doesn't have the signs on it, so one has signs, and a quarter mile up the street, the other one still doesn't have signs to date, so I think we do need uniformity, we do need standards in the city so everything is the same, because I think, you know, we have a lot of examples of crosswalks and signage, and it is confusing to people, so I think we just need to standardize things, and it will help those people that are coming in and out of the city, because, I mean, let's face it, seventy thousand people want to get in and out as quick as possible, that is a huge amount of people coming in and out of the city, and so the easiest we can make it on them, and make a standardized version of our, our traffic laws and the environment, I think the, the easiest thing for everyone, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, is there anyone else who'd like to speak in public comment? See, no one, the work session is adjourned.